Order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask everyone to remain standing for a moment of silence, both for the victims of the shooting in Las Vegas, but also more locally in memory of Scott Pexino, who was a graduate of Tiverton High School, I believe played on the football team, then went on to work with the football team for many years as the statistician, who died last week at the age of forty-seven. Thank you. We have three people signed up for open forum. Please be reminded that open forum is not to enter into any discussion of personnel, negotiations or ongoing litigation, and each speaker has three minutes to speak. And please, when you come to the podium, state your name and address, and I will give you a warning at one minute, when you have one minute left. Thank you. Jessica?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Jessica, as it was just stated, and I live off of Carl Jive in Tiverton. I'm going to pull it down. Oh, wow, that's way better, huh? Alright, so I'm going to start. I just wanted to honestly say thank you to the members of the school committee and the teachers, because you guys honestly take time out of your personal and professional lives to be the voice for us as the students. And when you're a student, you're dormant to the process that goes into certain clubs and programs and getting these after-school activities approved, and you never really appreciate these efforts. And me personally, I have a greater appreciation for this, because I myself am a professional board member. I currently hold a position under the Public Relations Chair for the Renal and Occupational Therapy Association. So, in other words, I'm not as dormant as you might seem, and I get it, but that doesn't mean that I'm going to accept it. I'm ultimately here tonight because I am kind of upset with the changes happening within the school district due to the atmosphere being created by individuals with too much influential power and who, quite frankly, have no clue what is in the best interest of the students. Now, I'm not here to start trouble or name anything in particular, so don't worry, because that's not my issue. And I get, being a teacher in a school district is like working for a company, and if the leaders and individuals of power set a standard that don't coincide with your intrinsic values, then you can always leave or go to another school district. But the problem with that is, when these teachers leave, students lose a teacher who is not only a mentor, but these are usually the individuals that have the first one to clock in and last one to leave type of personalities, and they lose people who they can connect with, and a lot of these individuals run after-school programs. And I would personally be nothing without my mentors. I'm going to get a little emotional here. When I was a freshman in this high school, a lot of people don't know that my stepdad, he had a traumatic brain injury, and he was in a coma from quarter three of my freshman year, all the way to quarter one of my sophomore year. So when I came back from my summer, where I should have been worrying about driver's ed or things that normal teenagers worry about, I came back somebody that you wouldn't want to meet, and I came back somebody that you ultimately would not think that they would be successful. But I am, because of the mentors that I had access to. And a lot of those individuals no longer work at the high school because of the atmosphere that is being created, and there's too much negative influence. And unfortunately, Tiverton is losing too many bright stars, which is impacting the potential shining power of its students.
Jessica, you have one minute left.
That's fine. To the voting members, next time there is a decision, ask yourself, "Am I making the Tiverton School District a place where mentors can inspire students and help them thrive, gaining the bridges to success?" Because honestly, that is your job. And if you can't figure that out, I want you, tonight, to go on your computer, and I want you to familiarize yourself with the website of the National School Board Association and familiarize yourself with their mission statement and the duties that are listed on it, and implement it, because that is what you signed up for, and that is your responsibility.
Jessica, your time is up.
That's fine, because I'm going to keep going.
No, Jessica, you're out of order. Please stay away from, step away from the podium.
That's fine. You don't, obviously, you don't respect me. That's fine.
No, Jessica, you've used up your time. Thank you. John M.?
My name is John Mishagian. I live at 775 Crandall Road, and I am a senior here at Tiverton. And I am a senior here at Tiverton High School. This is my last year. And the situation that the school is under, as of right now, I can feel the stress of the teachers. People are worried about losing their jobs. I don't know exactly what's going on behind the scenes, but I can feel it. It's affecting me and many other students. And I'm fearing for maybe not even being able to graduate this year, because I have plans to go to the military after I graduate. I'm planning on enlisting right after I graduate. And if I'm not able to graduate because of the situation that the school is in, the stress that the teachers are under for fear of losing their job, it worries me. And some of the teachers I look up to, closest to, most of them aren't even here anymore. And I'm not going to name names, but they're not here anymore. And it's really affecting how I perform. I'm, I just want to know if there's anything being done to remedy the situation and if there's anything that's planned, under, works, and that is all.
Thank you. Eleanor Byrne?
My name is Eleanor Byrne. I live at 140 Evans Avenue here in Tiverton. I'm going to throw some figures at you, and then I'm going to read what I wrote. There are five hundred and twenty-two students in this building. One hundred and sixty-nine students have been infected by not having a long-term sub in the physical education department. Fifty-six of those are seniors, one hundred and thirteen are juniors. That means forty-three percent of our seniors are affected, eighty-seven percent of our juniors are affected. The school department has failed one hundred and sixty-nine students for the first term, and I don't mean a grade. You have failed them by not providing them a teacher for their physical education or health classes, classes that were required by law. In August, when we were searching for our vice principal, we all knew that one of the teachers in our PE department was going to be applying for the job and was working as the interim vice principal.
Mrs. Byrne, you're out of order. You're getting into...
Well, then, I just, I'm, I'm not, I just, can I finish?
You're starting to get, you're starting to get into personnel matters. And so you need to not talk about specific personnel matters. Thank you.
On the first day of school, there was no substitute in his place. At least while this, while the search was taking place in the first day of school, a sub was in place. Why couldn't we not have said to that sub, "Would you like to be a long-term sub"?
Mrs. Byrne, you're into identifiable personnel matters, so you cannot speak specifically about personnel matters.
Alright, I'll stop with that part, and I'll just go...
You now have one minute left.
Okay. The term, we are midterm grades have been posted. Therefore, one hundred and thirty-two percent of our seniors do not have, wait a minute, one hundred and sixty-nine students or thirty-two percent of the student body does not have a grade. Forty-three of them, forty-three percent are seniors who do not have a health or PE grade. Transcripts go out the end of first term for seniors who are going to college. An incomplete does not look good on a transcript for college. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Consent agenda?
Dr. Larkin?
Mrs. Black?
Could I take 5B1 off, please?
Is there a second? All those in favor? This is for removal of 51B, I assume, for purposes of discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I remove a 5B?
Five.
Five. I'm sorry. Can I remove 5B5?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, can I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Mr. Ririck?
For appointments, technology education teacher, Tiverton Middle School, Daniel Frank; volunteer soccer coach, Tiverton Middle School, Gilberto Costa; cyber patriot club advisor, Tiverton High School, Julie Delcourt. Julie Delcourt was appointed cyber patriot club advisor at Tiverton High School.
Okay, so we move to item 5B1, assistant principal. Mrs. Black?
Yes, we have, we've received emails and phone calls about the process and procedure for this, this job. And I'd just like Mr. Ririck to tell us what it was, because it says, if you have an interview committee, they have to send the top three names and priority. That's what the policy says. And I know you answered us in an email and said that you interviewed them, but I think there was an interview committee. There was a search committee headed by Mr. Ashley. So I just want to know what the process was.
I think I'm on. Am I on?
Mr. Ririck?
Yeah.
So, Mrs. Black, sort of as last week, when, when the, that policy actually came up for discussion, I think it was proper to discuss the policy itself, but the application of the policy was not actually a post item. And I would say, in this instance, again, the application of the policy is not a posted item. We can certainly make that an, an agenda item at the next meeting, but I think the only thing that's actually properly before the committee is the qualification of the candidate recommended for appointment.
So, in our packet that we received, it was in the packet. The interview policy is in the packet. It was, it was sent with, by Mr. Ririck. And last week, last time I asked to talk about it, I was told no. This time, I'm, I'm told no, and I've about had it with us. No, no, this is very serious. The policies have to be followed. I know we said we're going to make a new policy, but this goes by the old policy that's in effect now.
I guess what I'm saying is that it is possible to discuss the application of the policy, including this appointment, but it has to be posted as a distinct agenda item. The way that this meeting is posted is that the appointment is posted. However, the appointment got to.
So, okay, I understand.
And we can do that. I'm happy to place it on the agenda for next Tuesday. But properly, the only thing that is before this committee is the appointment itself.
So if I hadn't taken this off and we voted, then that assistant principal would have been appointed. And then it would be too late to talk about it next time, right? If we just went, if we just voted to take the consent agenda, we would have all raised our hand yes or no, and it would be too late to talk about the process and procedure, which is very important. If you ask the people of our schools and the parents to give their input, you just can't then throw it down the trash and say, "Oh, we're going to just take what we want to do."
So work.
This has to stop.
Dr. Larkin, if I, if I might?
Yep.
I, I, I think what you're trying to say is, the only thing before us is the appointment, the personnel action of the appointment of the assistant principal. If you were to approve or reject, if you have a reason to reject and you think it's whatever, then you reject.
Yeah.
Whatever your reasoning.
So again, again, the people that were called from this school, the parents, the teachers, were asked to give their time, and then they can't talk again about what they put forward, just like happened last time.
Well, people can speak to this particular appointment if that, I mean, there's nothing, because we pulled it off. So if there's a particular reason that people, for whatever reason, I guess, feel we should reject this...
So you, okay, so, Mrs. Powell, you're saying we could talk to this appointment, but not the policy?
Correct, or the application.
Process and procedure. So then I can talk to the appointment? Is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry?
There can be no discussion of the candidate themselves.
Correct, correct. You, you can, I guess...
And we're not doing this to be difficult. This is a personnel action. This is, there's a reason these are in consent agendas. There's a reason that all personnel are discussed in the executive session, because of all of these personnel, all of these people have rights. So we're not doing this to be difficult. I know it seems that way. I don't know if Steve wants to weigh in, but...
Thanks.
Okay, so...
So I guess...
So you're the chair, and you tell me what you think.
I, I think that you can say, "I believe the policy was not followed appropriately, and therefore I oppose this appointment." I think you can say, "I would like to have the appointment," or the, the process of, how the, how the, the process of arriving at the appointment on a separate agenda that is properly noticed. But I don't think you can speak specifically to the process itself, as it was applied in this instance.
But it's your opinion that I can speak without saying any names about the assistant principal's appointment?
I think you can say, "I oppose making an appointment in this meeting, because I do not believe the policy was followed appropriately." But you can't speak to this candidate specifically unless you have, I think, some objection, unless you feel that there's some lack of qualification. I think you can do that. I'm not, I'm actually not sure you can do that.
So I, I don't want to...
Typically, if a member has a concern over an appointment specifically involving some aspect of impropriety or something of some sort, that didn't qualification, that had not come, it's, it's appropriate, clearly, to pull it from the agenda. I would recommend to the board, at that point, if it, if it's in that nature of a concern, that the action be suspended, it be referred to the superintendent to investigate the concerns raised by the member, and then, you know, proceed from there.
Right, right.
But that's, that's a typical reason.
Okay, so I think what you could do is say, I ha, so you can say, "I oppose this appointment, because I do not believe the process was appropriate to the appointment. I oppose this appointment because I have concerns about the qualification or history or something about the candidate," without going into it. And we, and then we all sort of say, "Okay, we, we can table it." Or, and, and you can say, "I would like to have a discussion about the application of the, whatever policy you have a concern about at another meeting." It's not posted for this meeting, so you can't discuss it.
Mr. Ririck, you were saying, mm-mm.
You can't talk about the qualifications of someone unless it's a certification issue. If the person's not certified, and this person is certified, meets the qualifications of the post.
I would just, I would just add, how we've done this in the past is we have asked for an executive session before the meeting started, and we have noticed the person so that we could discuss it. That's, that's how we've done it in the past. I mean, I've only been here seven years. We've done that at least twice. So...
That's true. So, so anyway, you can say you oppose the, the appointment, or say nothing, or...
So I oppose the appointment, because I want to know more about the process and procedure of the search committee. I also would question not just nobody's name, different qualifications, and I also want to know why we have highly qualified, talented people at this school.
I think, Mrs. Black, you're getting into areas that you're not...
I'm not saying anybody's name. I want to know why, if they can get hired everywhere else, why aren't we keeping them here? If they, if they weren't qualified, they wouldn't be getting jobs everywhere else. And when I go to a state thing, and I look around and meet everybody, and they go, "Oh, oh..."
I'm sorry, Mrs. Black. I, I apologize for doing this, but I think you're out of order by going into this area.
That's terrible. Thank you.
Sorry.
I'm not out of order. I've been doing this thirteen years.
Okay, alright.
And you said I could talk about...
And right now, there is not, we cannot have outbursts from the audience.
Dr. Larkin, you said I could, I could not talk about the process and procedure. I could talk about the appointment. I'm not mentioning anyone's names. I wouldn't do that.
Okay, you're getting into other things that I think are not properly noticed, but...
They're properly noticed. We're talking about appointing an assistant principal of this amazing high school. This is very important. This is crucial. This is incredibly important, and we can't discuss it? What country are we in?
We, we can't discuss it, but the person has a right to have it discussed in an executive session. And if we want to discuss the policy, we absolutely should discuss the policy, but as Dr. Larkin said, that discussion should have either happened before, or we have to do it after. Because right now, all we have before us is a recommendation from the superintendent. That's the only person that has the purview by state law to make a recommendation to the school committee is the superintendent. That's it. There's checks and balances. He has the responsibility to make the recommendation. Our responsibility is then to act on it. We reject it, or we accept it. That's what we're doing right now.
So we're the checks and balances to him, and so, okay, that's, that's very important.
But we don't have the responsibility, we don't have the authority to make our own recommendations. We can only act on him.
We can only say no to him.
I know that, Mrs. Black, but when you start talking about, "Well, I don't understand why," internal people, now you're, now you're getting into the realm of speaking about who you'd want versus who he's recommending. Yes, Sally, you are. And I'm sorry, but this, this, this not being able to move forward, this back and forth, this is not doing any of our students any good. We really, really need to come together. We need to, we need to vote, we need to accept those votes, and we need to move forward. The kids care about who's in front of them now. We need to put good people there now. We may not always agree, but we need to, we need to move forward.
Okay, so I am going to, and I'm sorry, this is not, this is the consent agenda. This is not open for public comment.
So I can't ask a question?
No, I'm sorry. So if you want to talk about the application of the policy, I am more than happy to place it on the agenda for next week. The matter before the committee right now is the appointment of an individual to the post of vice principal. If any other members of the committee have, and, and right now, we have this item open for discussion by the committee, so if any other members, Mrs. Pavo, do you have anything else? Do you have anything you want to say?
No, because I would be out of order.
Can I, can I, can I email you my question?
I'm sorry, you're not, it's, it's not permissible to, this is, so it's relatively boring stuff, but the consent agenda and the regular agenda are two separate components, and they have different rules applied to them. This is not an open hearing. Generally speaking, the consent agenda, there isn't discussion. We can pull things off to discuss, but right, but it is only among the committee members. So, Mrs. Farnworth?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the appointment of the assistant principal for Tiverton High School. Of, do I say them?
No. Okay.
That's my motion.
Alright, is there a second?
I'll second it, and is it, can I ask the superintendent a question?
Yes.
That I believe is relevant. I don't want to just to assume this, but Mr. Ririck, is Principal Ashley supporting this appointment?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor.
May I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
Mr. Ririck, did Principal Ashley write a recommendation for someone else?
I don't, I don't underst, I don't...
Recommendation letter?
I have no idea. I don't, I don't know who he wrote a letter for.
Okay, thank you.
So again, I think we're into things that are not...
Well, she asked the principal, Ashley...
I just wanted to know, it's the principal's number two.
That's how I feel.
Did he support this recommendation? I was told yes. Thank you.
And he wrote a letter in support of someone else? Okay, so when you take something off the consent agenda, it's to discuss it. That's why you take it off?
Correct.
Right?
Correct. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained? Okay, so 311, and then we have item...
I pulled off 5B5.
5B5. I'm going to refuse myself. Mrs. Black, if you'll indulge me and take the chair for 5B5?
Superintendent Ririck, I, I pulled this off because I believe earlier we did not have someone, and I believe now we do.
Yes, at the time that the agenda was posted and the backup documents were sent to the school committee, that position was vacant, and I believe we talked about it in our last meeting, that we would keep it on the agenda, we would place it on the agenda in hopes that someone would come forward, even at the meeting itself, if we did, if that were to occur. Fortunately, I did get an email earlier this morning, and I provided it to the committee, because it came, again, this morning, and I didn't have a chance to get it out to you. But Cheryl Morgan has expressed interest to be the Tiverton Middle School coach for the cyber patriot, sorry, cyber patriot club advisor, to say it properly, for the middle school.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor? And while, while we're on this, well, we can do it on the next one, on the 7C. Okay, we'll do that on 7C. Thank you. You can come back.
Did you want to move up 7C?
So we're still actually on the consent agenda, I believe.
We are in six.
So, Mr. Ririck, we have announced the other candidates.
Oh, the assistant?
No, not the two. I did for Mrs. Morgan, but for the assistant principal position. For the assistant principal position, I'm recommending, and the school committee approved, Tiffany Bolduc to be the assistant principal at Tiverton High School.
Okay, item six correspondence. Anything? Mrs. Byrne, Mrs. Byrne, you're out of order.
We're going to have to ask you to leave, though.
Mrs. Byrne, I'm going to have to ask you to leave. I'm sorry. Thank you. Correspondence? Nope, and...
I'll make a motion to move up 7C. A second?
All those in favor?
Yes. Regarding that, you have two handouts. One, it's, looks like, it's not in color, but it's labeled Cyber X, Cyber Patriot X. And I also gave you an email from Mrs. Delcourt, from Mrs. Delcourt, the high school coach. This was provided, well, Sue Zimmick gave it to me, but yesterday, and it's an outline of the information that we had as of yesterday for the different people who have volunteered their time. And it's a very easy-to-read handout, explains all the timelines that everyone has to follow. And it was very helpful to get that yesterday, to go through it. The second document is an email that I got tonight from Mrs. Delcourt, outlining the people that she has, have been able to bring aboard to help with the high school team. So I want to thank all the parents and...
help with the high school team. So I want to thank all the parents and, and all the volunteers, the coaches for, you know, really stepping up because this was done on a really short timeline.
Very.
And as we talked about at the last meeting, tomorrow is the deadline to submit the teams. That has to be done by tomorrow at midnight. So the coaches need to, that's their first order of business, is to do that. And my understanding is that we should submit the maximum number of teams, and if we don't get that many students, we can always withdraw a team, but you can't add teams. So in other words, assume that you'll get the maximum number of students.
And then there's no penalty to go leave teams.
Then there's no pen, that's my, that's what I was told, yes.
Perfect. Has there, can, just, just to get the discussion started, I'll make a motion to approve the Cyber Patriot Clubs at TMS and THS pending BCI checks contingent on letters of intent from all of our volunteers and outside funding. Second?
And just on the, the BCI checks, because they're volunteers, they're parent volunteers, I would recommend that we use our policy that we use for volunteers in the classroom for the BCI checks, which is the $5, fill out the form and send it in.
Okay.
So that would be consistent with, because Cyber Patriots held after school, can't be held during the day for the most part. So I view it as the same thing. So I think that would also make it easier for those parents that don't have a BCI to get one and submit one.
But Dr. Larkin, before I leave one more time, I just wanted to know, we had a security today in the school. Ask him. We had a breach of security in this building.
Julie? Is Julie here?
Okay, so.
I have a quick question.
Ms. Delcourt?
Hi.
Hi, Julie. Thank you. I'm just reading through your email. So your volunteers, like, will you have, and I mean, it'll be the same for the middle school, but I'll just, to you. So we'll have, for both of you, we'll have sort of a list of people that you'll know are going to be in the building with your teams. Is that how that is going to work?
Correct. So most of them will be more like guest speakers. So.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so yes and yes. But some of them will literally just be there for guest speaking.
And real, real excited to see the partners you've, you've pulled here.
Yeah, thank you.
That's exciting. That was my question. I just wanted to make sure there's going to be a list so that we kind of know who, who is and isn't going to be in the building.
And that's what was presented here, but again, because it's, you know, it's a, it's a work in progress, what we'll do is have it for all the names, so that we'll have it in my office for both schools. Who's going to be the technical advisors and, you know, you know, are they going to be at both schools or one of the schools? I think we still need to work that out, but I can work that out. Actually, the coaches can probably work that out, but I'll certainly need that information.
Okay.
Dr. Larkin?
Yes, Mrs. Black?
So we spoke about it last time, and I have the check here from Moran Shipping. And Citizen also called me and was very happy that we were doing this. And it's Leonard Wright. He used to be on the school committee for years. He was business manager, and he donated, he said, how much do you need? I said, whatever you can give us. He donated $2,000. So I'd like to give this to Linda Lawson for the foundation. He wrote it out to the foundation, and also Ms. Polish is on it, and that will be one.
Well, you can get that to the foundation.
Okay, all right. So that's going to be from Leonard Wright, $2,000 to Cyber Patriot.
And thank you for the generous donor.
We should probably have a future agenda accepting that. Are we going to accept it through the.
It's actually to the foundation.
Or the foundation.
You don't have to.
Or is it the foundation? Are we just going to build the foundation?
I guess the foundation has to actually make a decision to give it to us.
If the money's being deposited with the foundation, that is, the check's going to the foundation, so then we would have to send whatever bills to the foundation and ask for a payment.
Okay.
Thank you. And thank you to Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Mrs. Black and Mr. Wright.
And Mr. Black.
And Mr. Black.
Can I just ask one question?
Mm-hmm.
I know we were under the gun to get everybody signed up for all of this.
Could call it that.
The, the next steps, right, getting students. Is there a plan in place for how you will solicit the students to participate?
So a leopard doesn't change his spots. I plan on keeping my spots and doing commercials and videos. Then also, the Cyber Patriots' actual website provides excellent resources. So there's actually printable flyers that are made just for a school to put them around. Obviously, they'll go and get approved through the superintendent's office. And then also, I plan on doing an animation to allow students to get that. I don't know if you saw the animation soliciting for substitute teachers on our social media, but I plan on doing the same thing on the feed for our Twitter, which is predominantly our high school students.
Well, we're talking about sort of what has to happen tomorrow. You've got a.
Tomorrow, I just need, for the best of my knowledge, I just need to literally sign up and, and as if we are maxing out all of our options. That's.
So you don't necessarily need to have names of students?
Correct. Currently, we think we have five.
What would your timeline be to get students in? That's what I'm trying to understand.
So we are meeting, and by we, I mean the volunteers, and the majority of them are ironically BCC'd, or BCI already due to the fact that they volunteer in other aspects. So we're going to meet at the Tiverton Library in the Learning Center sometime this week. We're still working on our schedules. Someone is actually traveling, and that's where the meeting of the minds is going to happen. We'll have much more detail from there.
And, and please loop in Mrs. Morgan, who was so gracious late in the day.
Yes, we sure can today. Yes, yeah, absolutely.
You two are going to be buds, I can just.
I don't know. Are you big on video? Because you have a lot of videos.
I did want to just, because I think that, you know, they, they deserve the shout-out, and if we have any more, I certainly would have. But recognize FM Global, North Rep, Gromman, and Westfall Manufacturing for having mentors step forward. Terrific, terrific partnerships. So I did want to recognize at least the three that I knew of.
And one of the other things we talked about at the last meeting, and I spoke with Mrs. Zimmick yesterday about, is that the coaches just need to contact me for whatever technical support that they might need. Not that I'll do it, but I'll work with Mr. Carnavale to make sure that whatever technology, you know, whatever they download is they might need or whatever, we'll make sure they have it.
Okay, thank you. And thank you to Mrs. Cirillo, Mrs. Zimmick, and of course, our volunteer coaches, Mrs. Delcourt and Ms. Morgan. So thank you all very much for all the work you've done to get this going. Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor that I believe we need to vote on.
Yeah.
So all those in favor of approving the Cyber Patriot program? Okay, thank you very much. Item 7B, superintendent search.
How about A?
A?
Charter?
Oh, yeah. Item 7A, discussion, possible vote on the school committee recommendations to the town charter. So we have a number of different recommendations. I have very.
I did not bring copies.
You did not bring copies?
I made copies. I mailed, I brought, I sent them to your house yesterday.
I never had a chance to.
Yeah, no, I, the ones that I had that were emailed to me by Mrs. Farnworth and Mrs. Polish, I got out yesterday. Dr. Larkin sent me his this morning, and I gave you a copy and it should be in front of you.
Thank you, Bill.
So. Where's the copy of mine? There it is. I recognize it. So.
She didn't use Mrs. Farnworth, because that was the.
No, I'm looking for mine.
So what I was thinking we could do, if everyone wants to do it this way, is we can kind of walk through each, have, have the people who wrote the recommendations walk through each of their proposals, and then we can say, yeah, that sounds good, or that sounds bad, or maybe we should do it differently. We do have a meeting next Tuesday before we go before the Charter Review Commission, which will be Monday, the 16th, I think at 7:00 PM. I'll double-check that. What is?
I can't hear.
Sorry, you, you might want to turn on your mic.
Doing it next week is better for me.
Oh.
You said do it.
Well, no, I was, I was saying that we have next week as well.
Right.
To continue this discussion. I think we probably should, at least the things that we have, sort of at least walk through them and talk about, you know, the pros or cons. So I'm happy to go first. And I was looking at Article 3, Section 301D1, which was about elector budget proposals. And I basically had four recommendations. The one, first one was not a change in verbiage at all, but rather to ask them to break down in the charter in outline form, because when you read it, it can be very.
Agree.
Confusing.
Yeah.
To figure out what exactly you're supposed to do to submit an elector budget proposal. And if you'd sort of had more of a checklist.
And maybe you could, like, flesh that out a little bit more and say that, because I think that's absolutely, that's a great idea, to have it more, be more of a punch list or checklist.
Yeah, it's because, again, I think it can be very, the way it is sort of formatted right now.
Well, because it's just this big paragraph.
Right, and you're not sure what, frankly, you're not sure which sentence is modifying which sentence, which is, I think, one of the things that was problematic during the last budget cycle. So, and then I had three more specific proposals. One was that any alternate budget must be submitted to the town solicitor prior to the collection of signatures for review and to certify that the petitioner's budget conforms with the provisions of this charter. And I think that's important. I don't know if they'll go for it. It does cause more work for the town solicitor, but ultimately, if it's going to go before the Board of Canvassers and there is any question about it, the town solicitor's going to get involved anyway. And I think they have to really look at this as the intent of the clauses was to effectuate voter choice, to allow people access to the ballot, and so that they should do whatever is possible to be done to, to allow people to do that. And the people who are likely submitting petitioner's budgets are not going to be professional
Lawyers.
Town council attenders or.
Lawyers.
Lawyers or, or other things. And so I don't think that that's imposing too much of a burden on the town solicitor to do that, who's ultimately going to rule on these issues. I suppose it could be getting, you know, if there's an overwhelming number of them, then maybe we have other bigger problems that we should be trying to address, but I don't, you know, I think that's at least a possible.
Would you plan on suggesting an amount of time?
Yes, actually, I had that in my head, but I didn't include it.
With the lead or something? Okay.
But yeah, it probably should be, you know, that, well, they, I don't know what their overall plan is for the structure of the calendar of the budget, which is, you know, problematic. And I think one of the things that we're actually discussing tonight, but I think you would have to fit it into some kind of framework of it's, I think, 35 or 42 days before the.
Yeah.
Election that you have to.
Tight.
Submit it. So, you know, they could have a, you know, you, you can sort of fit it in there. Say, you know, you have to submit the petitioner's budget in this timeframe, and the solicitor has this timeframe to review it. I wouldn't think it would take that long, but I guess it could. And so, I don't know. We'll see what they, they do with it. I think they may reject it out of hand.
I think my issue too with this, Dr. Larkin, is.
Yep.
The reason I think it's a good idea to go to the solicitor is because the last time, by the time it went to the Board of Canvassers.
Right.
And it, the solicitor ruled, we kept hearing, well, we have to hurry up now and get this done.
Yep.
So there was like no time to react. So if, if the, I agree, if the solicitor's going to have that much input to begin with, he might as well just be the one who approves or rejects it for, for, you know, whether we agree or not, but at least, you know, you get it done sooner rather than later, and then you have time to react. You have very little time to react.
The problem as well was, we had the opinion of the solicitor in one instance about five minutes before we went before the Board of Canvassers. To try and figure out what he was actually saying.
And I think that's why Diane was saying.
And then, the second time the solicitor spoke to the matter, it was actually before everyone had had a chance, everyone had spoken, and there was no opportunity afforded to sort of say, well, the solicitor's saying this, but, you know, maybe that's not the right thing. Anyway.
That's good.
That's, that's number one. Number two, and again, it sort of is, I think there's room for misinterpretation, at the very least, to understand exactly what is the petition and what is the docket. And while there is a provision requiring that a docket be submitted to accompany a petitioner's budget, it's really not specified that that's actually part of the petition. And in fact, I would argue that the language suggests that it is not a part of the petition. The petition.
So just clarify one word.
Exactly. That if you're supposed to walk around with the docket, collecting the signatures.
Just tell us that.
Right. And, and that's, so, so that the docket actually has to be submitted at the same time as the petition, and that, and then that's the third thing, is that the said docket must be attached to the petition for the purposes of collecting certifying signatures.
Right.
If that's what they want, because apparently that is what they wanted, but they decided to let us know that at 11:59 on a Saturday morning. So. So that's my stuff regarding Article 3, infamous Section 301. So I.
Diane, you want to go first?
Diane, not Diane, sorry, Elaine or Sally?
Hi.
Anything to say about those things?
No.
What, your thing?
I think, yeah.
I think those were very good, after what we went through.
Yeah.
To make it clearer. I think there should even be a little checklist in the, in the town clerk's office, you know, because she doesn't want to get involved, and I don't blame her saying, do this or that. So if there was just a checklist, you have to have this and this and this and this, and then you know, because.
Right.
As you hear, we, the deadline was 2:00, and we heard it at 3 minutes past 2:00.
Yeah.
We, we passed it in way early. They had all week to tell us what they needed. So that's what bothered me about it. It's not like we went the last minute. We didn't. We got our last signatures, put everything in and said, we all set, and they said yes.
Well, and frankly, we then submit, when we answered the, you know, the complaint, although they called it, said it wasn't a complaint, because they didn't actually have standing to make a complaint, and, you know, I don't want to.
It was just very confusing.
Provoke PTSD in anybody, especially myself. But as soon as we said, oh, you want that, then we submitted it, really within minutes, because we had it.
Exactly. And so that should have been good.
And then people found things in the charter that are not there. So we're going to put them there, so that we know that.
It'll be clear for everyone, right?
Exactly.
That does it.
There won't be questions.
So.
If it's in black and white.
Correct. Okay. So you guys didn't put anything in yet, right?
I, no, I have mine.
Oh, you have yours. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But you want to wait till Tuesday?
No, I'll do it now. Mine, mine.
Do we have copies?
No, I'm going to email them to you. You want me to hold, because I'll hold, because I'm going to email you.
Why don't you email them to us, we have actually.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
All right. Sally, you're the same?
Yeah, we'll do the same if you want.
Okay.
Because I have 1218.
All right. And then Diane, you want to go next?
Sure. Mine pertain to Section 11, Article 11, Section 1101.
Which one are you doing first?
There's only three of them. They're all changes in the language, minor changes, actually. Nothing as heavy as FTR-related items. The first speaks to, let me see if I can put them in the order that they appear. Sorry. I think we may have one.
That's okay. Just tell us which one you want to talk about first, and we'll flip to it.
Oh, they're all here. Okay. So the first one is regarding vacancies on the school committee. The town, the current language states that the town council shall appoint a person to fill the vacated position for a period not to exceed six months or the next town election, whichever comes first. My recommendation is to change it to an event of a vacancy for any reason, the town council shall appoint a person to fill a vacant, vacated position until the next town election. I felt that the actual practice hasn't necessarily been in line. in line with the Charter, in that clarifying the Charter, you know, we don't need to be holding special elections or anything like that for one member of the school committee. We can certainly wait till the next town election.
Take money.
They have town elections every two, two years. There's no sense in having a special election just for this.
Great.
Is there a reason to say if the next town election is within the next three months that they can appoint for the, no, because that wouldn't, that wouldn't really be a good idea.
Well, they basically appoint until
Until that next election.
Until the next election. Okay. All right.
And I don't think there's any state law that says we can't do that. Okay, not that you're aware of. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Sounds good.
The second one speaks to school committee officer elections. The current Charter states that the schools committee shall annually elect a chairperson, vice-chairperson, and other such officers as they deem appropriate. And my recommendation is to change it to the school committee shall elect a chairperson, vice-chairperson, clerk, and other officers as they deem appropriate after each town election, or more frequently in the event of an officer vacancy, or if agreed upon by a majority vote of its members for any reason. I added the clerk to the language, as it is required that, by state law, that we have a clerk. I figured you'd put it in there. And then, you know, try to capture instances where we might want to have an election, but not to tie us to having an annual election. Because I, I'm not
We haven't had it there, no.
Yeah.
Actually, we've done it every two years.
Right, right. So it kind of leaves it up to the committee.
Sort of codifies what we do.
Right, right.
Okay.
Wow, that looks good.
And then finally
Do you guys have any?
Oops, sorry.
Diane or Yeah.
It is.
Okay.
And then lastly, copies of the minutes of the school committee meeting shall be on file in the office of the town clerk. I think we're all aware that we're filing our minutes electronically these days with the Secretary of State. I don't believe anyone's sending them over to the town clerk, so my recommendation is to change it to minutes of the school committee meetings shall be posted electronically to the Rhode Island Secretary of State website and in accordance with Rhode Island general law.
What is it?
Good.
These are easy cleanups.
Yep.
All right. Deb?
I will first tackle school committee access to the ballot. So as we all know, that the town solicitor came out with an opinion that said, basically, the first budget that we submitted in January was the only budget we could have. So I'm recommending that we change that language to, at the discretion of the school committee, an optional bud, said optional budget proposal shall include the budget committee recommended school budget or the school budget request. The school budget request shall be as recommended by the school committee by majority vote and may be amended from its original submission to the budget committee. Just, and then I just explained that, you know, we just need to be clear that we get additional information, we make additional decisions, and we need the flexibility to alter that budget if we need to. So it's just going to clarify what everybody kind of thought it already said, but the solicitor said it didn't.
And if that had been on there, we wouldn't have gone through all that.
Yep.
We wouldn't have had to have a petitioner's budget. So that's good.
Will it, I was thinking about this this afternoon.
Mm-hmm.
And would it make people, meaning, I guess, the sort of community, sorry.
I don't think it's on here.
Am I on?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. No, I'm on, I'm just not.
You just don't get a light.
I don't have a very long wire. So I have to hunch over it. So would it make members of the community more comfortable with this provision if we said it could be decreased but not increased from our original proposed budget?
No.
I know, I know, that's true.
What if we learn I think we, I think the point being, we just need the flexibility. And like I said, the original writers of the FTR, that was always the intent, is to have the budget committee, not the budget committee, the town council or the school committee be able to come in and have access to the ballot and an alternate budget. It's just, that's not how the solicitors
Yeah, I know, I know.
So I don't think there was anybody that had any problem with us having access to place an alternate budget. It was just the solicitors sort of put a monkey wrench in
And just to remind people, we wanted to decrease our submission.
Yeah, right, and we weren't able to.
He wouldn't let us.
And he wouldn't let us. All right.
So, all right.
The second one is timing. And I, I did talk to a few people about this, and it is tough. The problem with the timing is you need the budget committee to go through all the budgets. You need
Yep.
three weeks to properly notice the FTR hearing, you know, and when you, you need so many dates for people to collect signatures, you need so many days for, you know, the Board of Canvassers, that when you rack up all those days, it does not leave us a lot of flexibility. However, I did ask that we at least change our deadline for submission to February fifteenth, because as we commented, as the superintendent and Mr. Fiore commented at the last meeting, even a month would be helpful. I contemplated putting March fifteenth, but I think they're going to just dismiss that out of hand. So I thought, well, that
And again, with the whole timeline issue, is you're trying to fit into an arbitrary deadline
No, I know.
the third week in May.
Yeah.
And as I said before, many other municipalities, communities do it in June. And that's, that's what's driving all these, a lot of, at least, you know, from us, timelines, is because the timelines are so compressed.
I mean, it was
And it doesn't have to, it's self-induced. That's what the people in town voted for, and that's what's been talked about, but there's no reason why it couldn't be just extended.
So perhaps we make a recommendation to hold the FTR?
Because again, and I know every town is unique, but there's a reason for why districts, communities do that.
Again, the pushback on that has been and is that they need to get tax bills out on time. That's the whole reason. That deadline is set backwards from the tax
All's I know is Portsmouth gets theirs out on time. Middletown, my mother's comes on time, and they do theirs right at the end of June.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, they get, but they, other districts
And we, and we also have to allow time in our FTR process for if we need another round. That's what makes this FTR so unique, so difficult, because we could have another budget round if there is a tie or no one, not a tie, if no one gets more than fifty percent, we would do this again if there's three budgets. So it's, it's certainly an unusual and difficult budget mechanism, but it's the one that we have. So I, I think that, you know, at least asking for February fifteenth at least gives us another month.
Yeah. Well, I think we have to see what they say. You know, I, I don't know if this is going to be something they'll
There, there was talk in the past of changing our fiscal year, and that went down in flames, because people didn't want to do that.
Again, the question
But certainly, other communities have.
Again, the tax bill goes out in July. The question is, well, why? Why doesn't it go out on September first, like other dis, again, other communities?
Right.
This isn't, this isn't, this is known science.
Yeah.
You know, on how to, to fund a community. I mean
Well, right, and if, I guess if we push
Again, it's self-induced. Someone said it's some point July.
If we push that back, then this at least could go for another month. But maybe, maybe we write this like this, and, and the discussion is more about the deadline when we're there.
Yeah.
That, you know, and, and making those points, Bill, because it is a good point. It's, if other communities can send it out in September, why can't we? And that certainly would help everybody. So that's mine. Thank you.
All right. Is that it?
So we will entertain more of these next week?
So I think we probably should vote on them next week, after we've had a chance to think through them. And then
Sally and Elaine will send us
Yeah, if you guys can send ours electronically, and then we can all, and then we can sort of at least have a polished presentation for the Charter Review Commission.
A polished present? No.
Yeah.
Dr. Larkin?
Oh, polished. Yes, Mrs. Black.
Next, can you also put a discussion of the Charter, so I can report out what's been going on next time, on the next agenda?
Yeah. Oh, okay. So not, not our proposals, but rather
The update on the Charter Review Commission, so I can report out on what's going on.
Sounds good.
Thank you. It was a quark, I'll tell you that much.
All right. Now, Item 7B, Superintendent's search. So I put this on because I wanted to open up the discussion to all of us about kind of starting to approach this. I think the three questions we have to kind of answer in the short term are, do we want to employ some kind of consultant to help us in this search? I know other districts have done that. We could certainly talk to those districts. I think Portsmouth most recently did so.
Yeah, I want to say Providence did it, maybe Cumberland.
It did? Okay, all right. So maybe it was, all right. So that, that's one question. The second is, what and how do we post the, the position? And then the third is the composition of any selection committee. I'll take up the last matter first and at least give you my thoughts. One would be, actually, for us to act as the selection committee. I'm not sure that's the best idea, but ultimately, the responsibility does lie with us, and we would at least have intimate knowledge of the process and who we were selecting if we, if we did that. It would certainly take a fair amount of time. The other option would be to have people apply. I think the problem there is that historically, you don't get a lot, you know, as opposed to asking people to do something, when you ask people if they want to do something, then the answer is almost invariably no. If you say, can you do this, then, then maybe, and give them a reason why you want them to, then maybe that they're more inclined to say yes. And so I was thinking that one way we could go at this is, is ask people if they, you know, ask for volunteers or applicants, but also have a process where members of the committee could actually nominate people, presumably with their consent, to be on the committee. And, and we could sort of then decide, you know, either by vote or by sort of just discussion, you know, who we think would be good people to be on it. So those are my thoughts. Not very deep thus far. Anybody else? Mrs. Black, Elaine?
There isn't a policy.
There is no policy. No. I think your mic is either off or you're
No, there's no, there's no specific
Short-wire syndrome like I do.
I was just trying to remember, remember how we did this in the past, and I was thinking that there was a, a policy, but Mr. Eric Singh, he doesn't think so. I thought there was something that
The school committee haven't, that was me. The school committee created a selection team.
Okay.
And they ran it themselves. You know, they
Right. I remember that.
They had the meetings, and I, I don't remember who ran them, because I wasn't part of it. But they did, they took control of it
Right.
and ran it, however that was. I would just ask the committee to think about bringing in a consultant, because a consultant will help you, work you through all those
I was going to say, it'll help to
Like how to, how to pick a, a selection team.
Mm-hmm.
They, they will have meetings to get feedback from parents. They'll meet with teachers. They'll have focus groups to help give you information as to what people are saying. And then you formulate what you're looking for, your criteria, that, what you want in the next superintendent. And then they run, based on what you direct them to do, they then run the search for you, and follow the criteria that the committee agrees to beforehand. And then they just, they do all that. Then, depending on what the committee wants to do at that point, you would tell the consultant, we would like five candidates, if there's five, to interview. And you might want to do that in executive session, to call it down to three. And then you have, you can have public interviews.
I've seen a lot of public interviews lately.
Or you could do all of them in public. There's a lot of different variations of the, of the models that are used. And it would really be entirely up to you. Obviously, there's a fee for whatever firm that, that you would pick, but there's a lot of, there's a few reputable ones out there that, you know, you could look at. And you could invite them in, as, you know.
At the risk of volunteering, I've been around school committees for more years than I care to admit, and going through this process, and I have my own prejudice about it. Now, I'll tell you what it is. I absolutely endorse Bill's recommendation to you, and I also think the committee keeping control of that process and you being the ultimate interview, interviewees, I would strongly recommend that for a lot of reasons that you don't necessarily have to have me go into, but I just think it's a, it yields the best process and the best outcome for you as a committee and for the community.
Have you seen, I know Providence did it. They appointed a chair from outside the school community to sort of work with a consultant to run the, have you seen that?
All I can remember is the late Vince, Vincent Cianci would always call it, we're going to have an intergalactic search.
Oh.
And it's, and it's done for political reasons, and, you know, and we have Mr. Jones, who's the blue ribbon, you know, head of the company, and he doesn't care. You know, all I'm saying to you is I've seen them done those ways. The best results I've seen is where the committee keeps a strong hand on the till. Now, that's just my view.
Thanks, Steve. Well, I kind of, I guess I would like to look at what other communities have done. Haven't spent a lot of time doing that, but certainly we'll keep that in mind. I don't know what anybody else thinks. I mean, we don't have to, you know, there's no, Bill's not leaving next month.
No, but
But we do need to get started on it, and, yeah.
I, I think that the first thing we can all agree to is that we want to go through a very thorough and take a disciplined and professional approach to this, as we're looking for a leader for the next X number of years. I won't say decades, but years. In that we, you know, we approach this methodically and, you know, with, with all of our stakeholders' interests at heart.
I just, I would just like to add, the committee needs a timeline first. You need to know, when do you want to make the decision by? Now, the question is, that, that's the first question, because that's what a consultant will ask you, well, what's your timeline? So you need, the committee needs to answer that question first. Then everything else will take place after, because to do a thorough process, to do a professional search, it's going to take four to five months to do the focus groups, to do the questions, to do the posting, do the interviews. It's not something that can be done in a month for, if you're going to do it a thorough search, as Diane mentioned. It's going to take several months, so that's something you
Well, so it seems to me, then, the first question is whether we want to employ a cons, I'm sorry. The first question is whether we want to employ a consultant and
Right.
possible consultants to consider. Is sort of the first question, it seems like.
And then the consultant could, I'm sorry.
And then the consultant can work with you on the timeline. That's probably a sound path to take.
Mrs. Black?
Yes, I think, and who, who does the posting, like the qualifications, because everything's changed so much? Do you look at recent ones? Do you know what I mean? Like
Yeah.
What, or do we decide what we want?
Well, I think, I think that's part of
Is that part of the process?
I think that's part of the process of discerning, you know.
Because that'll be important, what we put down that we want, you know.
Looking for
What we're looking for.
And that's what the consultant, the consultant will work with you
Yeah.
Yeah.
As a group.
That's important. That's important.
But I've seen them run charrettes too, so they make sure that you get the stakeholders.
No, though, they will, but they want to, they're going to talk to you first, because you're going to be running, you're the ultimate deciders. And to answer Sally's question, yes. What the, what, what are you looking for? What are the traits? What are the qualifications? They'll work with you on formulating them for your, what you're looking for.
Right, exactly.
Then they'll do the focus groups, hear what they're saying, because what they want might be a little different. So then you have to bring them together so you have a composite set of qualifications that you, you as a committee are comfortable with.
So can we
And that takes some time to formulate.
Can we get even through Bill or Stephen or anybody, lists of consultants that people have used?
I, I would ask that you go through Steve.
Yeah, that would be
Yeah, that's probably
On this.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll give you advice or whatever, wherever you need it.
And certainly, I mean, we can do our own searches of what other people have done and see who they used, but you wouldn't, I mean, that seems like our starting point.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, sure, I'd be happy to help.
Okay, yeah, so if you could at least identify three or, or however many you think is appropriate.
I'll try to get you three or four names of reputable individuals and groups that do this kind of work.
Okay.
Okay, good, thanks.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
All right. item 8A, so this is something I brought up. There's really no backup. It was really more just, again, open a discussion, if we will. And it really has to do with executive session and sort of when we're kind of transitioning from open meet, open session to executive, we actually had a member of the public attempt to address us at that time. And it sort of brought to mind the fact that, once we've made that motion and voted on it to move into executive session, we're actually in executive session.
Yes.
And I think that we have to sort of know how to respond if someone is trying to continue our meeting as well. I think we have to be a little bit more circumspect, and I'm as guilty as anybody in this, of having prolonged discussions with, you know, our friends, our members of the public, or staff members, or whoever, you know, sometimes we're all three in one, sort of after we've done that. I think we stand some risk of creating an appearance, if not an actual violation of the idea of executive session, when you're really supposed to be, you know, sort of, it's, it's not open to the public because it is issues of personnel. And not that I think that people are really pursuing those discussions or discussions of the topics that we're, you know, hopefully, or that we are then subsequently going to talk about in executive session, but I think we just need to be more circumspect and wanted to see what other people on the committee thought of that.
Do you have any ideas as to what we would do in a situation?
Well, I think if someone is actually addressing us as if we were still in open session, we, we have to leave the room. If that person isn't, you know, I, you know, a word of, you can't speak now, if they then continue to, we really have to leave, we all have to leave the room, as, as the only mechanism I can think of to, to not run afoul of the ideas of, you know, of the rules of order.
I think even after adjournment, the same issue, because after we've adjourned, we're no longer a body making any decisions. We're just individuals because we've officially adjourned. So, I mean, that's sort of the same thought process.
Well, if we're having to, yeah, that's, that's a little bit different. I mean, I suppose if we start, continue to talk among ourselves, we're, we're in, we're in trouble.
Right.
If we're talking to people who are not on the committee, it's
Right.
No big deal. It's really
But if we're, but if it's a rolling quorum and we're all in the room and
Yeah, you could, you could certainly create that problem too.
In those situations, you're right, you just have to be careful, because you're right, we have, we, when we're in executive, we're in executive.
Yeah.
And we move rather quickly.
And we were adjourned from open meeting, and
Right.
It was also, you know, not a posted item that the person was trying to speak on. So, I don't know. Mrs. Black?
That's why we have a chair.
Part of the problem is, part of the problem is that we move from this area to the other area, and I think that, for some, they don't understand that.
Yeah.
We're still in, we're still in session.
Yeah. I mean, we can ask people to clear the room or wait till they clear the room, that's
And I think if someone gets up again to try to address us, why can't we just say, excuse me, you need to put yourself or put the item on, on agenda?
Well, we
I mean, I was kind of surprised, and I didn't expect anyone to get up at the end of that meeting. I was taken aback by it, but I was also taken aback when the microphone got turned off and the person was speaking. I thought that was rude. And that's just my opinion.
Well, I don't know if that was
I don't know. It might have just been coincidental.
I, I expect it was coincidental, but I don't know. I certainly didn't have anything to do with that. But the, but the, I think if you say to someone, look, you really can't speak now, you're kind of violating the rules of order, and they don't listen, we have to leave. That's, that's the only reasonable solution I can think of.
Or we at least have to step away from the table.
Yeah.
Can, if I can, a little bit of history about why we leave the room. It's courtesy to our TV crew.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, what was happening is, we would have executive sessions here, they would have to wait for us to finish and then come back and pack their stuff up.
I see.
It's all about you. So it really was a courtesy for them because they were waiting sometimes our, you know, or more, for us to clear the rooms so that they could
Right.
Take their equipment.
So we can't do it that way. All right, all right. Mrs. Black?
Do you have anything?
No? Nothing? Nothing? All right. Well, anyway, this was not a matter of something to, to vote on. It was really just sort of, I think we have to have a heightened awareness of that situation, and when we've moved into executive session, we should really be going to the conference room to have executive session and not really prolonging discussions and things. Okay. Number nine, announcements? Anything? Nope? Nope? Yep?
Today is National Custodial Workers' Recognition Day, and thank them today and every day. Thank you to our custodians for doing a fabulous job with our schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Black.
Just one quick announcement from the high school. This Thursday morning, through the Department of Transportation, we're hosting a interactive teen driving safety program for our juniors and seniors.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dr. Larkin?
Yes, Mrs. Black?
As has been somewhat of our practice, could I have a item placed on either the next agenda or the one after it, whenever it fits, to discuss having a student representative on our school committee?
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other? So next meeting, do we have a very crowded agenda next week?
Yeah, whenever it fits.
Be as busy as you want.
Spotlight on Success is supposed to be the first meeting of the month, if we can.
Okay. So we'll do Spotlight on Success, and
Thank you, it's already on. Thank you.
We have the charter recommendations, and I thought there was something else we needed to talk
Are we going to get any financials? Soon?
I don't.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. And we'll discuss the application of the policy for the vice principal search. You want to do that, Mrs. Black?
Or just the policy in general?
Or the policy in general?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I will entertain a motion under Rhode Island General Law 4246582, Legal Advice Director of Finance and Administration Employment Contract, and under Rhode Island General Law 4246582, Session Pertaining Collective Bargaining NEA Tiberton. If anyone would care to make such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?